Evening, everybody. The joint Department of Public Works Subcommittee Town Council Meeting, Wednesday, September seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, here at six fifteen in the Better's Meeting Room. Call to order, roll call. Assistant Member Lazo.
Present.
Assistant Member Cody.
Mr. Chairman, he did pick up his packet and he did have the agenda, so he was aware that we'd be here today.
Yeah, I texted him myself, too, as well. Counselor.
I'm here.
Ms. Dow, absent. Counselor Shing here. And Counselor Adams, we have one. All right, number three, approve any meeting minutes. I did not receive anything from the recorder, so I'll send her an email letting her know that tonight's and August twentieth. Have to get done with it. Thank you. Four, review, discuss town manager's appointment of Mike O'Reilly as a maintenance man, equipment operator, as recommended by the DPW Director, effective upon completion of onboarding and state ethics, entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Information of the town council. Very well, this is town manager.
Thank you. Mr. Riley is here this evening and DPW Director is here. They did do numerous interviews and this individual before us tonight is highly qualified maintenance equipment operator, which we've been very difficult to get equipment operators, so somebody that comes forward as an equipment operator, not just deliverer, is somebody that we want to make sure that we get on board, especially this time of year. And I'll look for the DPW Director if he has anything else to add or questions. Michael, I recommend him for Michael for point.
Anything?
No, very good candidate.
Okay, Assistant Member Lazo.
I'd just say, Mr. Riley is an excellent candidate here and I will fully support him.
Well, thank you. Counselor Shing here.
I've known Mr. Riley for a long time. I've always was impressed with his work ethic. He's not a person that changes jobs. And when I know him, he's a hard worker and a good driver and an equipment operator, and I think he'll be a good fit for the community.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor.
Well, Mr. Chairman, Mike Riley's a local guy, pleases help, is in great work ethic. And I think I can repeat what Counselor Shing said, he's not a job jumper. He's going to be around for a while. He did play football for Kansas City, but we will not hold that against him.
God forbid. So, yes, Counselor.
Sure, thanks to you. I've known Mike for a long time as well. Like everyone says, he's a great guy, great operator. I think he'd be a perfect fit for this town.
Well, thank you. Counselor, yes, sir.
I've also known Mike for a long time and I just really appreciate everybody that lives in Southbridge, works for Southbridge. It's a great thing to see Southbridge first. Thank you.
Anything else? Mike, you want to say anything?
Just thank you for the opportunity.
So Monday, you got to be here on Monday, forty-five minute speech, please.
Good luck with that.
Thanks, Mike.
I guess I don't have this job.
My hands are sweating just sitting here.
And just like that. All right.
He saved my life one time at the twelve Cream Street in the elevator.
Very well, thank you, Counselor. All those in favor? NAMIS Hall present. Number five, review, discuss transfer of million dollars from Water Stabilization Fund number zero eight four five to TIP Water Capital Account Three. What is TBD?
Well, eliminate.
TBD prime later on? Okay, thank you. Just make sure I wasn't missing something. For the town portion, costs associated with the intersection, improvements of Central Street, Foster Street, Hook Street, and Hamilton Street. With any remaining funds at close, a project to be returned to the Water Stabilization Fund, number eight zero eight four five. Allow town manager to sign all related documents and take a motion.
So move.
Move.
Second. How about this town manager?
Thank you through you. So as you're aware, the TIP project is being funded through Mass DOT and that grant program. The grant itself was a total of about six point two million dollars. There was non-participatory costs as part of that grant that we're responsible for. That is the water lines from top of Main Street down to the TIP. So those limits within Foster, Hamilton, and Maine, anything associated with that, we're responsible for. That was part of the original TIP design, I believe. Originally, the opinion of all of the costs stated that it was about one point three that was town's cost. Went out to bid, when the bid came out, it was reviewed and determined that our total cost is approximately nine nine, nine oh two five five two with a contingency built in, which gives it about nine hundred ninety-two thousand. I'm rounding up to, I'm rounding up to a million, just in case there's any other costs. And then we have the language, as soon as this project is closed out, all the books are closed, the money will automatically go back into the Water Stabilization Fund, as opposed to sit there like other projects. We're starting to do that more with these projects. To say, project's complete, doesn't sit on the books, you can close it back out. That was reviewed with our auditor and he agreed with that strategy. So that's what we have.
Thank you, sir. Discussion. Discussion out there?
Can I explain that clearly, Butch? Was that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just glad to see this moving forward. I know it's been a long time, probably what, five, six years now we're looking at and we're starting to finally see the fruition of this. So they get all involved.
They'll be starting construction of this fall, right, water lines more. Yeah, so definitely this spring, so.
Well, thank you. All those in favor? NAMIS Hall present. Just note that Assistant Member Cody is here, present. Six, review, discuss awarding contract to Keating for road improvements. Not funded by the CDBG program per bid number two zero two five, pave and allow town manager to sign all related contracts and take a motion. Do you second?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Thank you. So through you, we had gone out to bid on the pave, which included the CDBG portions of the project for North Street. Upon review, we pegged Butch. We needed to go out with federal prevailing wage as opposed to mass prevailing wage. So we're going to have to rebid the CDBG portion, so I think Butch and Bob are now working on that bid package to go out, so that we'll have that ready to go in the spring. This would allow us to do any, the contract was for this year and optional for two more years.
Yes.
And therefore, we had the option to do some chapter ninety work under that contract, so this would be for all chapter ninety work. And they do have some roads that they're looking at to do under chapter ninety, put in for some funding for this. So this would allow us to do those portions this year and still use the same company. Keating was the lowest responsible bidder. And that will allow them to do the roads this year and up to the next two years if we so choose. So I recommend approval of this. If you have any questions, defer to Bob or Butch.
Okay, all right, Counselor.
Maybe this question for you. Are we going, on Monday night, when you bring this before council, are we going to have a cost associated with this contract?
The contracts, Butch, I I got the little switch, you know, water plant, I'm going to pay them. So this will be the cost at the bottom. I usually ask for a little bit more. I've had a little bit, so we don't have a issue, because something always comes up.
Thank you.
This is a different than the one you had.
Yeah, what are you talking about?
So if I may continue. I was reading in the packet, I only could get a portion of the packet to come up on my computer, but they talked about North Street, Benefit Street, Bean Street.
Yeah, if I could, that was all of CDBG. That was all the area under the CDBG grant that we had applied.
Okay.
So all those were the CDBG grant funded streets? This would be anything that was not within that catchment basin.
So the Candid Street is from the police station to the Rotary?
Yeah.
Yeah, basically, the bridge, roughly.
And Dresser Hill Road, are we going to pave the complete length of Dresser Hill Road?
Yes.
Are we going to fix the issue the Pichu has?
I haven't even really reviewed that with anybody yet. I've been trying to get somebody to come and show me what's going on with that, but there is a, there is a pipe just down from the Pichus that goes under the road that I found the other day, so I don't know if we even need to do a new pipe. I might be able to just keep the water on that side of the road to get to that drain and go across, but I need somebody to go over there and show me what the issue is.
So we can do that before you decide to pave Dresser Hill?
If we, if we need to do it, we need to do it quick.
Because I remember last year, they prevented DBW from going on their property to clean that pipe and catch basin that's on the property.
Yeah, I'll have to look into that quick then.
So.
I'll second.
Yep.
Thank you.
I'm well aware of that, as you know.
Yes.
The pipe was put there many years ago, no easement, that's the problem. It was a big disaster over the whole thing. When the former DPW Director took over, he said he's not going to even go on that side of the road. He's going to run it down, we're saying, on the opposite side and then bring it down to where the cross is.
Yeah, already pipe there.
Yep, that's what they want to do. That's what they was planning.
We can do, that I don't have to worry about.
Don't have to worry about the cross of the street anymore.
That would be great.
Thank you.
I appreciate you bringing it up. This is something that happened a few years ago. One town manager, second town manager, I know that Steve has been like working with Zach and there's some things going on there, but I know Counselor Lazo was there. I mean, so a lot of people are part of this whole process and anything that you possibly need, we're here to support you.
Butch and I have talked about this, just the matter of him.
I've been out to look at it myself, but it would be nice to have somebody that really knows what's going on, come and show me, or show Bob.
Thank you, Counselor.
Mr. Chairman, I'm well aware of it. My brother has been down there throughout the whole project. It's something that needs to be fixed. Back in the good old days, when someone was laying a pipe where they wanted to run it, then howling were built, created the problem. Then when they had the big spill out of the basins of the
Solo fields.
Solo field, it created a rush, and I think if we're going to tackle it, tackle it all at once, make it one project and, you know, and Jack, if we can find the money to do that, we'd get it done ASAP. Even if we have to go and use one of our contractors, that's already on a contracted list, to sort them into a lot of bed, new unit placement.
My only comment is there, there is a pipe there. You think it needs to be bigger?
Correct.
If it needs to be bigger, now is the time.
Okay.
Before you pave the road correctly.
Feel free to, if my brother is well aware of that whole project.
I can take you there and show you everything you can.
Counselor Adams and myself were involved in it.
If it gets accomplished, it'll be one of the things I'll just take off, if I think it's accomplished, next year, just thank you, thank you.
You're talking about the property of Sammy DePito's property.
Correct.
Sammy gave the town right away, we cleaned that one. There's a manhole underneath the rock and they cleaned that out years ago, Sammy.
They checked, they checked the stuff, there was no railway there.
Well, I cleaned it.
It was a hearsay. It was not legal.
No, but I cleaned it personally.
I know you did.
So DePito owned the property.
I know you didn't, and you know what we did? We repaired it all.
Right, and there was a problem because some of them went under the house when they.
It goes under the garage and the house.
Right.
So I.
McColl had been cleaning.
I will tell you, like, um.
It's dead now.
Former town manager, McColl.
For over a year, yeah, the project up on Hill.
Okay.
And I know the system very well.
So Mr. McColl, when he was the town manager here, he did a lot of legal research on that whole process and came out with a solution. Hopefully correct, it's the correct solution, but I'm glad to see it moving forward and where it needs to go and help that property owner out a little bit and take care of that. Any other questions? All of the favor. NAMIS Hall present. Thank you for sending this out, too. All right. Number seven, review, discuss East Main Street road project status and any recommended change orders needed to complete the project and allow the town manager to sign all related documents and take a motion.
So move. I'll second it.
Okay, this is town manager, you want to discuss this?
Uh, thank you. So there's, there'll be two pegs passing out the change orders. Thank you to Peg, Butch, Bob for putting this all together. We're trying to get this East Main Street project completed. Part of this first, we'll talk about the, let me talk about the pipe relining portion of this first sewer pipe. So Counselor Lazo, Chairman Lazo, had conversations with me a little while ago, not a while ago, about the concerns with the sewer lines. We've had some laterals that we put in, they had to do repairs, so the concern was what the quality of that line may be before we pave. And the solution was to reline that, so we had set quotes to reline it. So in order to do this, rather than doing a separate contract, we can do this as a change order with Amarillo, because we have the, we have the capacity to do that. We did, Butch had originally gotten a quote from, through sewer operator with Insta Foam, it's consistent quotes with what Amarillo has given us. So our recommendation is to have this completed while we're doing the road project. And we had already allocated the money in June at the town council meeting to transfer six hundred thousand dollars from retained earnings. So our recommendation is that we go forward with this from Amarillo. I know Peg has provided some language for the agenda item and there may be just a slight change to those, to that agenda item. So that would be one. The second change order would be for McClure Engineering and Construction Oversight. And I'll defer to Butch and Bob for comments on that, on the oversight, but this is all to, so we can.
Very well, discussion. Counselor Shing.
We're not going to pave this this year at all? We're going to leave that area of East Main Street.
It's going to be milled down and then a base is going to be built down and the manholes will be raised. So for the winter time, everything will be fine.
We'll have a smooth surface.
Yeah, the manholes will be flush.
And then they'll come back in the springtime and finish it off.
So for the public, though, it'll be happy.
So for the.
A lot of people.
Happy, or, I don't know, it'll be happy.
For the relining, we don't have to open up the road.
Right, good, that is.
But we wanted the camera and.
The additional work that Amarillo is doing, isn't part of the problem then breaking the sewer pipes?
Well, I mean, they've, I don't know, I mean, you know, they, the only time I saw them break a pipe was if they actually broke it, so it was like a thirty-six inch clay pipe. It was a huge, huge clay pipe. They claim it fell apart when they got near it. They fixed it, but that's not really, that's a small portion of this. I don't know if that's a repeated thing. Most of that work was done prior to getting here, and Bob getting here, but I think most of the, I mean, McClure's work is a lot of, a lot of gas mains that were abandoned that they didn't know about, water mains that were abandoned, so they had to redesign a bunch of times, a lot of it's that. And then there was some nighttime work, some shutdowns, they had to shut down the AO, so they had to come in at night, that's extra money. Anything the engineering company does is extra money, even, even a meeting is extra money. It's common for all.
The AO work, that's related to the sewer that broke in the river?
No.
No.
No? Okay.
None of that work is related.
Yeah, it was just a water, the water related to the AO. There's nothing.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just have a question because I heard, I don't know if I'm correct in saying it, I heard they hit sewer line three times, or three different sewers or whatever it was. And if they damaged it, why aren't they paying for the damage that they did? Why don't they pay for the relining instead of the town? Just a question.
Relining is actually, it's something we, we're kind of doing on our own. Scott brought it up because we don't know the condition of that pipe, the overall condition of the pipe.
Oh, the whole pipe, the main.
Yeah, so we want the camera and clean it and align it before we pay it, because after we pay it, we don't want to have to go in there.
Correct, right.
Counselor.
I was on the job site and yeah, there was a nick of one of the clay lines. The discussion started on having those big lines underneath everything. If the underground line lets go, you're going to be digging a brand new road and it's going to be underneath all the drainage and some of the other stuff that's there, so the, one of the job foremen started, he goes, you know, how do you know what the inside of that line looks like without cameron? So that's where I went up to Butch and Jack and I said, we should camera that line to see what it looks like, and once you camera the line, anytime they dinged it, they repaired it. But the thing was, it's a clay line, they cameraed it and it warranted to be relined. And it's just good practice to reline it before you finish the job, so we don't have to go back in there if there's a break.
Thank you, sir. I do have, anybody else have a discussion or a question? So the money's already been allocated, correct, from June? Is that what you said?
Yeah, so we had preliminary conversations about this, saying, hey, look, this is something that we really, we really should look at. We had a preliminary estimate on it and we had the estimate for it. And so that we could use retained earnings, we allocated six hundred thousand dollars because we knew it was between five and six. So we allocated the money, and then it was a determination of how we were going to do it. Was it going to be something that we independently do? Or do we do it as a change order, as part of Amarillo? So it's a change order.
Oh, okay, so I thought you already scoped it, or I thought you guys already scoped that area.
No.
I know, I remember that meeting in June, something like you were talking about.
Yeah, so, yeah, so it was just the timing of it, how best we present it and all that. Because otherwise, we have to go out for bid and all that, so they could do it as a change, a change order.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Any other discussion on this? So really, we didn't have a motion. This is more of a discussion. Now we have two motions here in front of us, correct?
Yeah.
So, either we send that motion, the original one, and we're not, got it?
No, I, I don't think there was even a motion. It was a review of discuss.
It was, I actually didn't have a motion then at that point, so we have two motions to read here, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
For the second motion, like Jack said, we probably need to add to it the funding source, and I misspelled contract. I went to the T O at the end and told you.
So the Amarillo contract, just so you know, would be, to be funded from account six four eight eight two.
Six four eight eight two, okay. Funded by, funded through.
Which is the sewer retained cash.
Very well.
Because that also includes the money that we had previously allocated for this project, so it would just add into the same project for sewer.
So that's six four eight eight two, okay, got it, got it. Okay, so we'll go ahead and do the motion on the first one for project six four eight eight one. Approve change order number two to McClure's Engineering and Construction Oversight Contract for this one hundred forty-nine thousand, five hundred forty-four two hundred dollars and twenty-three cents to complete the East Main Construction, Construction Project using number six four eight eight eight, sorry, six four eight eight one, and allow the town manager to sign all related documents. So I'll need a motion, it's a, very well. Any discussion on that one motion? All those in favor? NAMIS Hall present. Now, the next motion is going to be to approve the change order number two to AF Amarillo's construction contract.
Could you just add in that?
For the additional, yeah, I'm doing that right now.
Just add in that, because this is where Peg and I had an opportunity.
So I'm going to add that right after the mouth.
So it would be for the sewer relining of East Main Street.
Contract four, the sewer.
Relining.
Relining.
Of East Main Street.
Of East Main, okay. And about five hundred sixty-nine dollars, five hundred sixty-nine thousand, one hundred eighteen dollars funded through project number six four eight eight two and allow town manager to sign all related.
So move.
Got a second already? Thank you. Discussion on that motion. Alls in favor? Oh, so, hold on, yeah, but.
Got a total price here of five hundred sixty-nine thousand, one hundred eighteen dollars. Am I looking at that right?
Yeah.
And then in the next page over, we got a price from the same Insta Foam padding for five hundred seventeen dollars, five hundred seventeen thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars. What's the difference?
The contractor is entitled to overhead profit, and he had a ten percent.
So who takes responsibility for the project, Amarillo or Insta Foam?
Amarillo overall, he's a general contractor.
I didn't realize that.
Yeah, sometimes it's up to twenty-eight percent. That's kind of pretty happy with the tenant.
Christine.
Yes, AF Amarillo is also doing the recurring street, and they also use Insta Foam to their stuff to do the sewer lining already on that one.
I just didn't realize the difference in pricing, five seventeen versus five sixty-nine.
Any kind of sub works for a general contractor, they usually just general contractor, it's a markup.
Okay.
That happens on all.
Steve Ryan knows that, yeah.
Yeah.
Should we bring that up at the town council meeting?
What's that?
Just that they added ten percent of that? Not that we have to put, just bring it up on it?
Somebody has a question.
Digging history, yeah.
So that was the original price that I had, it was five seventeen.
Right.
But, you know, that's why we rolled it into this, rather than have a separate contract that wouldn't be rolled into Amarillo on the same project. Better to have one contractor handle that title sculpting work.
But, I mean, isn't it more adding your, adding your charges for us if we went and used Insta Foam and saved fifty thousand dollars and?
The problem is we have to go to bid first, and it'll take us another month if we add it. By adding it to the contract, we can just add it to it.
Okay. I understand.
That's the reason.
Yep.
Anything else?
Nope.
All those in favor? NAMIS Hall present, thank you. Number eight, review, discuss transfer of eleven thousand, one hundred dollars from fund account number zero eight four two Capital Stabilization Fund for fund to account number six four four nine nine DPW Capital Purchase. For the purposes of purchasing one Billy Goat X three zero zero one Hurricane for DPW and allow town manager to sign all related documents.
I'll make that motion. Billy Goat.
Is that what it is?
I was very specific in the agenda item when I typed this, wasn't I?
Yeah.
So.
It's essentially a leaf blow, I believe.
Yeah, sure.
Very large leaf blow.
It's a big Billy Goat.
The other ones. The, the, the one they're replacing is unable to be serviced or repaired.
Okay.
Right, and that's why they're replacing us.
It'll save a lot of time, too.
I offered them to test it out at one zero two three North Woodstock Road as well, so. October, so.
All right, any discussion on this? Okay, all those in favor? NAMIS Hall present. Number nine, review, discuss transfer of two twenty-five thousand dollars from fund account number eight four two Capital Stabilization Fund to existing account number six four four nine zero River Bank Erosion to be repurposed as rail trail capital for the purposes of the rail trail bridge repairs and allow town manager to sign all related paperwork and take a motion.
So move.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you. So during the course of the repairs of the rail trail, there were a couple of small bridges that were previously built by the DPW. They were not part of the scope of the rail trail, I believe, correctly if I'm wrong, but it's because it would have involved Concom and all that, so they left it out of the whole EDA scope of work. And the DPW is just looking to purchase materials so they can repair those existing bridges.
Okay, thank you.
So this bridge repairs, is this the one that went down past the creek?
Yes.
That way?
Yeah, behind Brookside Terrace, yeah, there's two. One there and then about another, I don't know, half a mile, three quarters of a mile downs, it's behind nineteen.
Yes.
Those are the two?
Yeah.
Okay.
They're pretty bad. The first one's pretty expensive. The second one has plates on it right now, so it's hard for me to determine the condition.
So the Riverbank Erosion was the original member account that we had to stabilize.
Yeah, a long time, yeah.
That was an old capital account, so we're just repurposing the same capital account and renaming it to Rail Trail Capital. And that way, in the future, if we have any work that we want to do in the rail trail, we'll have a capital account.
Wasn't that the, I thought, I thought the state was supposed to take care of that.
Or they did the bank.
They did the bank, and all that.
Okay.
So I think we had a match or something in there and that was our match.
That was the original grant or the original grant.
Yeah, so that was the account, so we just repurposed that account number and renamed it Rail Trail Capital again. Because the rail trail will be around hopefully for a long time, and if we have to do any, if it is later on, we'll have a capital account.
You may have mentioned this, do we have any more funds out of that one old account? Any more besides this?
This one was totally closed.
Any discussion? Any further discussion? Yes, sir.
This question, eleven thousand dollars for six by eight by twelves? How many of them are there? That's an awful lot of lumber. And lumber is expensive, but.
Pressure treated?
Yeah, I know, it's expensive. I just built a couple of decks for some people, but I mean, that's.
Includes all the hardware and everything.
No, I'm just saying, there's, there's one listing of pressure treated timber, six by eight by twelve, ten thousand eight hundred. I mean, that's a lot of just those boards. I mean, I just did a few, got a few decks that I used some big stuff.
I don't know.
Is something else in there or?
He's a licensed carpenter, right, Luke?
Yeah, it was measured out by Luke Brown.
So he may, he may have given a little more than he actually needs and make sure he had enough money.
And quite honestly, we would just.
I do the same thing, so.
We would just purchase what we need, any money would be retained in there.
Yeah, it's probably just making sure.
It's an estimate.
No, I do the same thing, so. I'm just wondering.
So I'm assuming like that after these projects are done, we'll know if we have any more money left in there, probably very little.
In this one?
Twenty-four thousand, yeah.
But the purpose would be to leave that?
Yeah.
I mean, that account altered as a rail trail capital.
Further maintenance on it.
Something else happens, we have to buy ballers because of cars driving or something.
There'll still be a lot of maintenance on that place. Okay, thank you. Anything else? Alls in favor? NAMIS Hall present. Okay, review, discuss the updates for trench regulations as recommended by the DPW Director and take any action. So we, we met, a few of us just the other day. We agreed that December fifteenth, we'll have a final regulation of the product on the trenches itself. I still owe you an email just to set up some more, a couple more meetings out of this whole process. My, we'll bring it back to the Subcommittee. I'm not really sure it has to go, maybe I'm wrong, the, the regulations portion, doesn't, I don't think it has to go back to the town council for approval, but I bring it to the Subcommittee. The, the regulation portion doesn't, I don't think it has to go back to the town council for approval, but I bring it to the subcommittee for any discussion at that point. If the bylaw needs to be entertained, then that's the town council's case at that point. Yes, sir.
So if I understand, the regulation, the DPW director makes the regulation, do you approve it or disapprove?
So I just want to clarify, I'm pretty sure that's how it works. I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Because we had that discussion before.
Yeah.
So we can make a recommendation to him, but it's ultimately, it falls on him.
Hopefully, yeah, it, it really does.
All right.
But it's a civil discussion about it, if there's needs to be, made some changes.
Right, I mean, I'm just, I'm just concerned with, and I think as part of the regulation, you take South Street for instance. They, they, Newco dug that all the way, all the way up to Hospital Spa or maybe beyond. And we felt that it should have been paved curb to curb, because in our regulation, it says, I think, if there's a lateral that every fifty feet, they have to go curb to curb. And if you go down to the beginning part of South Street up towards the hospital, you'll see the different laterals that were done and they just did patches over there. And then the, up by Hospital Spa, you see it's all marked out. Again, it sounds like Newco's going back up there and redigging all the paving in the area and probably going down Seal Street. I, it's all, you know, so my, my concern is that we get proper paving done and compaction done. And, and I think part of the regulation should have a nuclear test through the compaction, which I believe National Grid requires it for their contractors to do that. But we don't, never see that. They just go there and hammer it down with their bucket and, and that's it. And then you end up with a situation like where on top of Dresser Street, that is starting to drop down where the trench that they dig. And I'm sure you're gonna see that on Lebanon Street if it's not paved correctly and, and Lebanon Hill and all that area there. So it's just the paving portion of this regulation needs to be enforced, being able to be enforceable and up to date. So I, I'm anxious to look at the regulation once it's done.
Okay, and the whole, the whole point of this is to come back to the subcommittee to review it.
Okay.
One, one last time before it goes to, just so we know where it's at, maybe there's, set eyes we just kind of missed on.
And fines, if there's any fines to be had.
Right, and, and are you gonna consider taking, I know in other communities that National Grid does work, Newco or whoever, RH Whiteout, Connecticut, those kind of things. Their permit is only good for thirty days. It's not good for the whole town forever. Is there a, a, an idea of shortening their length of permit to a, and not forever, the whole year, you know?
Street by street.
I can look, you have it.
Yeah, the, the, the whole purpose is to make sure that we are listening to what you guys have to say and anybody else has to say to see if it's feasible to do within that regulation itself.
I know when contractors do jobs in other towns, the inspectors from the town, DPW directors or somebody like Butch, who's walked through the contractor saying, where's your, uh?
Compaction report.
Reports.
Mm-hmm.
Where is your permit? Because you give them rules and regulations and I bet you Newco, none of them have that regulation in their hand.
Do you have such regulations like that?
Yes, you do. You, you've got the regulations.
Yeah, there, there was, on your, three of them, yeah, there was regulations.
What do you call it? A bricklayer or a bric?
Drain layer.
Drain layer.
Oh, but it doesn't have like compaction requirements.
I believe it does. And then I believe National Grid as the contractor, the actual contractor, they sublease to, to Newco and they're supposed to follow National Grid's rules. Which is more stringent than some of these towns.
Good.
Okay.
You know?
Let's, okay.
Okay.
There we go, thank you.
The previous, um, director shut Newco down because they weren't doing the proper paving on the roads. At some point he did. I discussed this whole situation with the new director and I liked some of the ideas he has with the tag system you wanna put on and all that. So I think he's got it on, he's going on the right track with this thing and we can discuss it further.
Yeah, what we'll do is, I'll get you, Counselor, real quick, just, just understand that December fifteenth is our, kind of our deadline, that we wanna bring it back, after that, bring it back to the subcommittee. But there's, we're gonna work back, do a workback plan and just start having a couple of meetings here and there to, to add and subtract and then clean it all.
Sir, Mr. Chairman, the Frenchman, I mean, what we're asking is, where is it written that the DPW director does the regulations without the stamping of the council?
So that's why I'm asking the question. I think that's where it is. I'm not one hundred percent certain of.
But where is that written, I'm saying?
I believe it's the charter that says, well, regulations.
It's a what?
It's in the charter.
It's in the charter that he makes the regulations?
I believe it's in the charter. I'll look that up though.
I'm not against, I've just never heard it before.
No, if that's the one, they go to the council, it's okay. But I believe it is in the charter. I believe it's in the charter that said the DPW director will make all regulations.
Yeah.
Butch, you can comment on that, okay? Thank you.
Sir.
Start.
Yeah, I, I do a lot of work in town. I drive around a lot on the roads. And I've noticed that the streets that they've done the drains, the gas on, the manholes are tipped, I mean, there are a few that are tipped. The majority of the manholes are tipped towards the work that's been done. So it's, you know, whoever did, manholes didn't compact itself and it's loosened it. And it's just, I, my wife went down Dresser Street and I told her many times the other day, she hit one of the manholes. God, I was gonna ask what we can do, because we broke her, she broke her shock in her, in her car.
That's a, that's another issue that we have to.
There's three real bad ones on Dresser Street.
The problem is that they, they offer to do repairs, they do mill and pave, but they're not responsible for the structures. So they don't raise it, they don't adjust them like we normally would adjust the structures before you pave.
We all talked about that when that, all that happened.
Right, so they come in, mill one day, pave the next, there was no adjustment to structures and they're really not on hook for that, but we need to figure out how to get around that and get that done. Because you're right, there's some bad ones on Dresser Street.
There's three, there are, there's one on Taff Franklin and, Taff Franklin and one at the top of the hillside school.
One on the top is bad, yeah. No, we're gonna have to go into those ourselves. Unfortunately, we'll have to, just do a new pavement, but you're right, they're rough.
Yeah, well, she broke her shock on the car the other day. I mean, I told her, I told her not to. I don't keep you going twenty-five miles an hour over those.
That'll break more shocks.
And you had that discussion.
Tell them by a four, they're rugged.
Mr. Lauzo, go ahead.
Oh, he, he answered the question.
Okay, good to go. All right, any, any other discussion on that? All right, motion adjourned.
So move.
Second.
All in favor? NAMSAW present.